Village of New Paulus Planning Board Meeting at 7:03 PM. My name's Maurice Whitman. I'm Chair of the Planning Board and calling the meeting to order. Other members present this evening are Rich Stephens, Michael Zerler, Liz Harsho, and John Litten. Our secretary is Brogan Rose O'Donnell. And the Village Planner, Brenda White. Impersonating Brenda Smith the last two meetings. And Tom Rockwell is our Village Board Liaison. Our attorney is George Rodenhausen. And we have an agenda with two site plan reviews and three ZBA referrals and some other business. The first site plan review is PB 1408. Proposed construction of two-family, is it one-two-family building?
One-two-family house.
Yeah, one-two-family building. On Pencil Hill Road. Come on, come on, come on.
My lawyer's not here yet. Can we do the, can we go next or does it matter?
Okay.
We'll get started.
Okay, I'll, we'll do you next.
Okay.
Water Street Market Site Plan Approval, PB 1409. One of my shift gears from over here. I've already asked you how you are, Bob, so I'm not going to ask again. Okay. So what, would you like to explain why we're here for this? Or would you like me to give my?
Why don't you go ahead?
I'll try.
Okay.
Correct me if I make any mistakes. So I believe this began as a result of an application that was made for a cinema on the Water Street property. And while that was in the works, the Building Department was informed of some irregularities with the site. He made an inspection and came up with a list of things that were not in conformance with the site plan that was on file. Is that correct so far?
Yep.
And so you said you have submitted a revised site plan showing some changes that were made. Maybe I don't have it. I thought I had it. Okay. And so why don't you tell us what you've done, what's on the plan?
The original location of the dumpsters was changed. It's now down in the lower parking area.
Are you describing what is there now or what you propose to do?
That's what is there now.
So in other words, the plan is showing what is there now.
That's right. So the dumpsters are in the lower parking lot. And they require an enclosure. And I couldn't find any specific design requirements in the code.
That's probably true.
Three-sided, four-sided, what are we looking for?
Well, why don't you speak to the Building Department? I'm not sure. I've seen three-sided with doors.
Okay.
You know, the idea is to make it so that things can be contained so that any spillover doesn't go anywhere. And then there's a site, you know, a vision, visual impact. So if it's shielded from public view, then probably don't need four sides. But I think, speak to the Building Department, they'll set you straight.
And then as far as a setback, I believe the way the code reads on the dumpsters is setback is equal to the side setback in a particular zone that it's in.
Okay.
And I think the gateway is a zero setback. So I'm assuming that we could, even though that we're not going to get that close, we're probably 12 feet away from the property line.
Okay. Keep going.
Should I check with the Building Department on that?
Well, yeah, we'll talk about that after then. Let's, we can keep going in the meantime.
In the original site plan, the oil-water separator was not under a parking spot and it currently is. But I determined that the weight of the construction of the oil-water separator is such that it can take a load from a vehicle. Okay. That was one of the items. There was trees, there were trees shown on the original site plan 15 years ago. And for life of me, I don't know if those trees were put in or if they died or what happened with those. They were supposed to be evergreen trees. Right now along that property line, that would be, that would be the Easterly Line and south of, south of the existing barn, just off the property. There's a fair amount of deciduous trees in there. Again, I don't know if the trees were planted and died. I don't know.
Right.
All right. And then we have the parking striping has changed since the original site plan.
Okay.
Some of the landscaping is also changed. But I don't think significantly.
Okay.
I think that's about it.
What about the width of the driveway or the?
The widths of the driveway are ranging about the 18 to 19 foot wide.
Right.
I mean, it was built that way 15 years ago. I don't know how or why, but.
Does the site plan 15 years ago show 13 feet?
No, it didn't. It didn't actually show any dimension as I recall.
Did it show the concrete walls there at that time?
The retaining wall? Yeah, I think it did.
Do we have a copy of the original site plan up here?
We do not.
So the work that Rich did to compare the as-built to the original site plan, do we have a list of those things that are not in conformance?
I believe that he wrote them up in his write-up.
Okay. I do seem to remember there being. Do you have a copy of this, right? You got, yeah.
I believe I do. It's in a different format than that. I have to notice a violation.
No. What date is that?
It's 9/11/14.
Okay, this is written 10/9. It's addressed to you.
10/9.
No, it's not addressed to you.
No, it's addressed to planning and district.
Right. Okay.
Don't know if I received that.
Oh, you have. Is there another copy of that around? If I can help, please. Thank you. Yes, that's for you.
Oh, thanks.
So from my perspective, the biggest problem seems to be the driveway. That the code says 25 feet and you've got 17 or 18 or something like that. And it may have been that way all the time, I don't know. I would like to see the original drawing at some point if we can, if we can get that scanned and sent to us so we can see what we're talking about here. Okay, so Rich Travis went right to, as you can see there, some ZBA variances that he thinks will be required.
Right.
I don't know of any alternative to that, George. Yeah. Yep, variances.
I don't know if the driveway is a ZBA issue because I think that's the New York State Fire Code determines the width of the double. Didn't we go through the Church Street property?
I recall. Oh, I, well, I do recall.
We did the Church Street property, we talked about the chimney.
I think that was residential. Maybe I'm.
I thought it had to do with two-way traffic.
Certainly a ZBA will refer to the fire department to get their.
No, I mean, this is New York State Fire Code that says.
Then they should refer it to the state too. Or consult the expert from the fire department. From the state fire code.
Well, it has to go to them first.
A ZBA has to make that, they have to take it from here for those variances. But just looking at this side yard, 10 feet, is that, what yard are they talking about with this variance?
Up against the residential property.
Parking adjacent to residential district.
On the east side.
Yeah, east, a little bit here.
Okay.
East side. So this edge here.
In 13G, 13J, the Gateway District, there's another side yard or yard setback provision. Side yard except for providing residence or residential district. I'm saying none required except if it's residential and in this case required to 15 feet of landscape buffer to protect the adjacent uses from nuisance characteristics. Is there a landscape buffer there?
There are fences there. Really high fences, I'm not sure on whose property.
But that's an issue of the planning board discretion. Planning board may require up to 15 feet of landscape buffer.
What's the section there, 212, 13?
13J8. 13J8, A and B. Rear yard is same thing, up to 15 feet landscape buffer. It's just unique to gateway.
So I would say your next stop should be Building Department to make a ZBA application.
Do we need a referral?
No. Correct?
It will come back here for a recommendation.
Right, but we don't have to refer you to ZBA.
I don't think they have in their code a referral provision authorizing the planning board to refer directly to the ZBA. You have to apply to the ZBA.
Actually, you have to apply to the building inspector and they'll.
That's what I mean, building inspector. Okay. Do we need to come back here for any issues?
Well, you'll have to come back, you won't have to come back for their referral. They will have to refer to us for our recommendation after they get everything that you submit. And after that, it depends. If they give you, if they grant all three variances, then I would imagine we're done. I don't know if there are any, well, the parking thing they can do.
But you're going to have a site plan approval, so.
Yes, 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 but.
Regular public hearing.
But for these, I'm sorry, are you talking about for the project as a whole or?
Right.
Yeah, then you have to come back for the regular process.
Okay. Yeah, I suppose the ZBA will refer to the county, so that will take care of that referral. Rick?
I should.
Okay.
Okay, Bob.
It was in that this year. Two spaces.
Okay.
Is it three?
It is three now.
What's three?
The number of spaces per dwelling.
Oh, I see.
It's changed from two to three during this year. So it's now three, was two.
Okay.
So here's the long and brief memo.
Okay. Mr. Cafrey is ready. Welcome back.
Good evening, everybody.
So, Mr. Cafrey, you are here for a site plan approval for new project on Pencil Hill Road, which is a two-family building. And you've submitted a site plan and your, what I heard was that you are saying that we only have to look at your parking as opposed to the full site plan.
That's what I had thought when Brenda corrected, or somebody corrected. Yeah, full site plan.
Okay, then we have lots of stuff missing from the site plan.
Okay, cool. That's why we're here, right?
Okay. So. Sorry?
Sure, sure, sure.
Brenda, do you have an extra copy of this? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, folks. Mike Gillespie, I'm the consultant engineer for the project and I would meet with Scott Cafrey, the applicant, and Ken Stanger was counsel to the applicant for the project. I think some of you may be familiar with this from maybe from the board on a kind of related project some time ago. It changed quite a bit in scope and stature and so forth, so let me give a quick rundown of the overall. If you're familiar with the area, effectively, while we do maintain a majority of our frontage on Pencil Hill Road, the project is located at Pencil, Plains, Mohawk, and Water Street, kind of where all those streets converge. We are in an R2 residential zone. What we're proposing is a two-family home, total of eight bedrooms, which is a permitted use within the zone. The parcel itself is just under 33,000 square feet or about three quarters of an acre, just to give you an idea of size. It is a proposed single building. The footprint is about 1,600 square feet. When you include the first and the second floor, we're on right around 3,000 square feet total. In terms of the layout, based upon the orientation and configuration of the lot, a bit of a challenge in terms of making things work, but effectively what we have is we do meet our setback requirements which are defined in this area here. We are proposing sole access coming in off of Pencil Hill, just off of the intersection. We're proposing a total of 15 parking spaces, which I believe is over what we require based upon the building, we do bedroom size and so forth. There is a stream water course that's located along this portion of the property that runs effectively parallel with Pencil Hill Road. And as part of the requirements specific to the village, we're required to not be within 20 feet of that relative to some previous services and things such as that. So we detailed that 20-foot separation here and in fact, we've kept all our parking and our drive access aisles out of that location. You'll note now that the areas it serves now is effectively just a big gravel area which has always served effectively as an auxiliary parking area well prior to even guy purchasing it. So probably part of the benefits of this certainly would be the fact that, you know, the existing gravel area and so forth would be pulled away from the edge of the stream to the edge of the buffer and certainly would enhance that corridor down through there. So from an overall standpoint, obviously central water, central sewer, that's kind of the overview of the project. Okay? In addition, based upon the U.K.B.C. requirements, the effect of disturbance of what we're proposing is well under what's required for the formation of a formal stormwater pollution prevention plan. Certainly there's still erosion control and drainage control that has to be in place. It would be, as an exiteration of this plan, those will have to be detailed to ensure that there's no contributing at the stream and so forth, but from a logistical standpoint relative to amount of disturbance beyond the plan. I don't know if this was submitted as part of our application, but just to give you an idea of architecturally what we're looking at there, so.
Is there any questions or do you want me to wait until our?
Well, I wouldn't mind if you finish.
Okay.
I mean, effectively, that's the overview of that section.
Okay. Now, as you, what we would normally do is we would not even put on the agenda an application that isn't ministerially complete, that has a conforming site plan and everything else. And there was some confusion about that on our end, so we're here. And we've given you a memo that shows some of the things that are missing from the site plan to make it complete for us to look at the application.
Okay.
So that's what we will do after we get your next site plan to conform to the requirements of our code.
And in terms of stipulation between us and the village, this is all spelled out. If you didn't have a copy, it'll make a page you copy. Okay. Yeah, as long as, I think part of it too is, is my understanding is to, we're in for a, our initial application discussion with the board relative to layout, make sure we're in some same accord relative to what we're proposing here. And then certainly we can go ahead and provide all the details required as part of the standard site plan application and that goes without saying.
I have just one question if someone can help me so I can be better prepared for the next meeting as well. On the other side of your memo, I was counsel to Mr. Cafrey on the litigation that referred to in the first paragraph. I didn't read the agreement before I came here tonight, but this looks very accurate and very, very consistent with what our agreement was, so we'll get those features incorporated into what you need to have in front of you before we can proceed.
I didn't think that agreement had anything to do with this.
Yeah, no, we, what we did when we settled that, well, you're going to have that up on another piece of conversation tonight, and if you need the background, I was there for that. As part of the resolution of that litigation, we agreed to surrender our grandfather status to one of the lots. Because if you recall, when the village board passed this law authorizing site plan review of these two-family houses, my client's building permits applications were specifically grandfathered out of that law. And there was some discussion and some issues about the building permits being issued or not. Consequently and subsequently, through a great deal of work on both sides, and I think really very, very terrifically detailed work, there was essentially two tracks of resolution. The one building permit which was already grandfathered out was allowed to proceed with some agreements with respect to the specifications of bedrooms and density. And we agreed to surrender our building permit on the others so that we would surrender our grandfather position and voluntarily come back to this board for site plan review, which is why we're here tonight. And I think that, I know that Mike didn't have a copy of the agreement, but this is, I remember this very clearly, because this was very, very well negotiated and detailed agreement. So we'll get all those materials for you. But the one thing I wanted to ask about so I can be prepared the next time, or perhaps just, I don't have to come, I can just deal with Mr. Rodenhausen by correspondence. There's a reference to compliance with easements on the property. Do you, what does that mean?
Well, that's a question I have. You've got a mark on your plan. Large area there is an easement area. I don't know what easement's for. So utilities and so on, but.
Are you going to look at that?
Yeah. That cross-hatched area, I assume is an easement-covered property. I don't know what restrictions are on that.
There's an easement there to allow for some private access, across the building and so forth, so we'll provide a copy of the.
All right, so that's what your work, that's the concern, would be obviously.
Just even though you can cross it, so it seems to overlap.
The building's not in it, within it, right?
No.
All right, okay.
It may not even, the building's not, I can't tell.
Well, the building's up here, right?
Yeah, but it looks like the driveway comes around here and in there, so.
All right, so let me pull a file, let me pull out easement. I will get it to you with my memory and my understanding of what it is and how it affects or does it affect. Perfect, what we're doing, is that right?
That's perfect.
Okay.
Is that correct, the parking? Yeah, I put, in that I had two spaces per dwelling unit, but the law was changed this year to three spaces per dwelling unit, so parking spaces, so that's just incorrect in my memo.
Oh, for the last parking thing, man?
It should say three per dwelling unit, that's six plus two more is eight minimum.
Right.
And you're giving us 15, so.
Right.
Question is why are you giving us 15 of us?
No, I'd indicate it, I think, when I added more for the purpose of having more. I don't, in going through this, I don't see anything on here beyond what we typically require. In fact, some of the things I think are on this plan. We'll all just go categorically through these, respond to each one of these and go ahead and highlight those for an extra mention.
And what's the total acreage of disturbance?
The total acreage of disturbance.
As soon as that's an acre is what you're telling us.
Well, the whole parcel is not even an acre.
Right.
So, you know.
And then this is probably a quarter acre or something?
The entire property is three-quarters of an acre and I would venture to say that the disturbance is probably, probably a third of an acre.
Liz, you have a question?
Yes, you indicated the building restriction line on your plan and it was always my understanding, and perhaps I've had it wrong all this time, that building restriction lines also apply to parking. So your plan, as it's shown there, indicates parking within the building restriction line.
Are we referring to what I would call a setback line?
Setback line, yeah.
So, I mean, because what my job here tonight is to just kind of make a list of questions that I can try and get some good, you know, solid answers based on my research of the code. But the concern that if I understand it is that the setback to the building is adequate, but there are areas in the parking area that fall within the setback and is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I don't think the setbacks are part of them.
Well, is that the question? Because then I can get that answer.
The set, yes.
All right, the parking area is within the setback shown here. And then the question is whether or not that's permissible under the village's code, right?
Correct.
All right, so why don't we call out a question on my checklist of questions and we'll get an answer. Which we'll deal with Mr. Rodenhausen, hopefully we can agree on, we've agreed before.
Mr. Litten, do you have any questions?
Really?
Really? Mrs. Zerler, any questions?
So if they're going to, just a comment, and I don't know if that'll impact the site plan subsequently, but given that there are 15 spaces listed, which does seem more than necessary, and given that the parking is completely in front of the building, although I understand the easement might be an issue here, is it, at this point in time, does it make sense to just let them prepare a complete site plan as they have it or should we? we suggest things that we might want to reduce or change at this point? I understand that we're not, we don't have a full application, so.
Right. My preference would be to have them submit their application and deal with it.
Okay.
As a submitted application.
So let's do that.
Rather than...
Then I'll hold my comment.
Chipping away. Mr. Stephens?
I have a comment at this point.
Okay. So, we, your normal site plan submission with PDFs, and there's been a number of copies that the village department will tell you we need. Once we get that, once they say that it has all the required elements, we will schedule an application review meeting for the next, we would like two weeks before the next meeting. That's the submission deadline.
For materials.
Right. So once that's done, we will...
Do you have a date, so we know what we can ask?
We can probably do November 18.
November 18?
Well, it depends when they submit everything.
Well, when is your next available meeting? What, like, when is, when is your next meeting you meet?
In exactly two weeks.
All right, so absolutely...
That was not going to work.
So we can make that, so now, when's the next meeting after that?
So if you, the next meeting is November 18, so if you submit everything on November 4, Tuesday, then I believe that would be sufficient.
Okay.
George, when I'm corresponding with you, shall I do it through the chairman directly with you? How do you want that done?
You can do it directly to him, and...
With a copy to the chairman?
That'd be great.
And Mr. Whitman, is that?
My name is Maurice Whitman.
You have a new law firm, don't you?
Yes.
Do you have a new card?
Okay.
Thank you.
See if I do. He never gave me a card.
Well, I was going to make you a copy, and I'd submit it two weeks before the next meeting.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right.
Have we established the escrow on this?
So, yes.
You have a more, I think you're all right. All right, great.
Okay.
George, I know that the ZBA's referred the matter to consent. If you, I'm here for this, not for that.
Right.
If you want me as a factual resource, I'm available, but not if I'm going to go.
You know, it's...
I'm not here to argue anything, I guess that won't happen.
I don't think so, not at the moment.
Okay.
It's, it's on the agenda. I, I can't figure out, other than the statutory requirement, because the code is written in a way that it says, what was the wording that looked like? They have to submit this to us, or they did submit it to us? But it really is something that we don't have, I don't think we have, I mean, we haven't discussed it yet, but that's just my thing. If you'd like to wait a while, we'll, we'll do it right now, and we'll see. Is there anything else about this application now? I think we're done, right? Okay. So there is a referral from ZBA. That says, "Application for interpretation regarding two Mohawk." Any board members have any, anything to say about this?
I mean, this was an Article 78 application, not a planning board or a ZBA application.
Yeah.
I don't get involved with Article 78s in the planning board member. It's my understanding.
Well, yeah, this...
My understanding that I'm outside of this as a planning board.
I could say a few things about it.
Yes, please.
So I looked at George, you tell us, where is our position on that?
This has come up in an unusual way by neighbors or opponents to a project, having filed a, an appeal, and a lot of questions about standing and so on about the appeal, but if I don't appeal with the zoning board, it appeals to, from the building inspector's decision to raise the building permits, and that's right. And so...
No, not from issuance of the building permits, but the issuance of the certificate of occupancy, which were issued after the building permits were issued, the construction wasn't compliant with them.
Right.
They didn't challenge the building permits, they challenged the CS.
So it's technically and procedurally an appeal to the ZBA from the building inspector action. And I think when the ZBA looked at the code, our code seems to require that all appeals, the term appeals is in the code, as well as applications, must be referred to the planning board for its review and recommendation back. And, and so that scooped in this, what is really coming up as an appeal and interpretation of the code. Normally, I don't think this board has any ball whatsoever in interpretations of the code, as strictly as only board jurisdictional question, our opinion here doesn't matter.
We're included.
Well, it's hard to say, it's hard to say what our code means, why it's referred, but I think in the abundance of caution that was referred here, my recommendation is that this board simply either not respond or respond saying no comment. Not responding assumes you've approved, so I think responding saying, we have no comment on this, it's a legal matter, is an appropriate thing for this board to do. And it is a legal matter, in the sense that it's, it's an unusual question, and, and the ZBA will be looking at it hard, have a public hearing and deciding that issue.
So I move it?
Mr. Zerler, do you have any? Mr. Litten?
No, that's, I like it.
Move it.
I would move if we take no action on this application.
Or recommend?
We recommend that we are taking no position on this.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. See ya.
George, look forward to it.
Work your way again. See ya. We also have a ZBA referral for a variance for an additional bedroom at 18 Mohawk Avenue. And we have... And I had it here. Let me take it.
Six by one.
Yeah, six by one.
Do you want another copy?
No, I think I have it here.
Oh.
Thought I had it here.
Okay.
I have a variance. You know, I'm looking for Bren's memo, I printed it out tonight, I'm sure.
You got it right here.
Thank you.
Sure.
So this is, ZBA 1415, and this is a memo from Ms. White, our director of planning. Would you like to summarize it, Bren, or should I, should I read it?
I can summarize it if you'd like.
Okay.
Some years ago, about 10, I believe, this applicant, she said that we could add a five-bedroom house, he wanted to add a sixth bedroom, and that's not allowed, okay, the five bedrooms are too many for this lot size, so...
Supposed to be four?
It's supposed to be four. And so he went to the building inspector, and at the time, the building inspector told him that if he took the doors off the two bedrooms on the second floor...
I thought it was doors and partitions, no?
Okay. Still, there's a hallway and bathroom in the middle of the rooms, so...
Right.
It's up to you to decide if those are two or two-one.
Okay.
He could put a room in the basement. So he took the doors and partition off, we're not sure what that means.
Okay.
Put the room in the basement. Since then, he added the doors and partitions back in. The building inspectors and rental registry inspection found that to be illegal, and so now he's coming to ask permission.
Anybody have any, anything to say there?
No.
Okay. Mr. Zerler?
Well, I'm surprised you don't think...
Well, I'm ready for a motion if you want that, but...
Yeah.
No, you got me?
No, Mike, I'll be happy to wait for the motion.
Mr. Litten?
No.
Mr. Hershaw? Anything to say now?
No.
Okay. You have a motion?
I would recommend that we deny approval based on the density, excessive density.
And it's supported by the memo from our planner?
Yes, okay, it's supported.
By the head.
From the code, okay. I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's that. We have, there's something about green acres I saw somewhere, we have a ZBA for green acres, is that true?
Yeah.
I'm not sure it's somewhere, George. Green acres. Requesting front yard, um, excuse me, Bren, I'm reading your, I think, because it's already too far. Not because you're requesting front and side yard variances 15 and 7 feet respectively to place a zero net energy home closer to the lot line. We've seen these before, I think, looks a little bit dangerous, we'll overlook it. R1 zone, it appears that the grading of the proposed variances would have no negative impact on the neighborhood. Should be noted, we've discussed many times the R1, R2 business. In my evaluation of the entire district, there are no homes that comply with the front yard set guide of 50 feet. The boards are not considering the impact of amending the R1 zone to reflect more appropriate setbacks for the setting. So, in that light, is there anybody that would like to make a motion on this? Recommendation to the ZBA.
I would rather we support the recommendation that the front yard setback be reduced to 25 feet, and the sideline setback be adjusted to the 15 feet.
Okay.
15 feet?
15 requested there?
Well, the variances are 15 and 7.
7, I'm sorry. Oh, 15 and 7.
So we could just say that we...
Just to break the change.
Why don't you just recommend that the requested variance be approved?
Yes, that's what I recommend.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But on that same, oh, there's a little bit of X thing, is, there's been discussion about just changing the zoning up there to R2.
Yes.
And that would allow two families to build on some of their...
I don't think, I don't think that's what we came away with, to change it to R2. I thought we were changing it to change the zoning.
We changed the, we requested the setbacks.
Right, and remaining in R1.
Of the main, R1.
I'm just saying, there's been some discussion floating around in R2 in that area.
It hasn't come from village board members.
It hasn't?
No.
Okay.
Never mind. I don't mind.
From the applicant?
Okay.
Never mind.
Okay.
One of my various meetings I've attended and discussed.
Okay, so I think, therefore, we are done with the agenda except for minutes. I also want to talk about training. Thanks, George.
Okay.
It's a pleasure, George. Mike, all right. And thanks for the card. I'll give him a... We could do the minutes. Does anybody have any questions about the draft planning board minutes for the meeting of October 7, 2014? Do you have a motion to approve the draft minutes of October 7, 2014? Thank you. Any discussion?
No.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wanted abstention.
Yeah.
Big deal. Shouldn't matter. Okay. I have two, I have two purchase orders here, one of which is something that puzzles me, which is a refund for an application that we never saw, application fee. Why would the planning board have to have to vote, give something back that we never saw, was never on the agenda, I think?
What was the application?
It was...
We're going to have to answer.
Yes, I see that. It was Green Hill, it's, it's Alpenklee.
Green Acres applied probably a couple months ago.
Excuse me. Thank you.
For, for planning board review for two lots, since then they, the lot, the people that own the lots decided they didn't actually want to build what they wanted to build, so there was no need to come before the planning board to do, through the application.
They were going to combine two lots.
They, they did pay $30, which was plugged into the planning board line with the application fees, and order to refund them, the planning board has to make a motion to take that money back out of the lot.
It was plugged into the planning board line, okay. They have a motion to refund...
So moved.
Green...
Second.
Don't fight over it. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have another one here that I will just sign. I'm not going to tell you anything about it. Keeping it to myself. And there has been some discussion about training, and there was a flurry of activity because we got a memo from our planner, Ms. White, that nobody on the planning board had any training logged for the year, but the year doesn't end until June, so we have time, so there's no need to rush into this. I would like to encourage board members to seek training through county, which gives at least two, maybe three times a year at SUNY Ulster, perfectly good, free...
You know, I went to the last one, why wouldn't that have been it?
Because you didn't give the certificate to, you know, keep it to yourself, that's where it's going to stay, buddy. Okay, so...
I figured, sign up for it.
Yeah.
Sign in.
So you have a certificate, right? If, if, if you don't have it, I'll get you another one, or Bren can get another one from the county. So anyhow, I will, as, as I wrote in the email to you folks, it is your responsibility to get this done, but we will, Bren and I will try to find some other resources besides what she sent us today, or I guess it was today.
Yeah, it's good.
There's, there's lots of stuff. I went to something last night in, in Suffolk, or Ramapo, one of those places, that was about, mostly about green infrastructure. It's a new watershed, it was written by a manual that isn't published yet, there's a draft of the PDF which I will send everybody, the link to. It was developed by the Orange County Water Authority, and Hudson, I always forget the name, this is Laura Hee's group at DAK here.
Hudson River Estuary Program. Yes.
Hudson River Estuary Program, and I think they were the only two that were party to this, but it was really very well done. And the presenter from Orange County Water Authority who said, it's an interesting name for his organization because they have no water and they have no authority, but anyhow. But he gave a really good presentation. The gist of it is that green infrastructure costs no more than concrete, and it's so much better in the long run for everything. And this gives examples of how to do it and so on, really very fascinating. Unfortunately, we as planning board do not have any, any authority, any, any teeth to tell a developer, you know, live roof and, you know, daylight this creek and all that stuff. I see a hand going up in the dark over there. Mr. Rocco, trustee Rocco.
Granted that you may not be able to give directions to a developer unless there's already an issue spelled out in the code, but you do have authority with the village board that can make changes in the code.
So this is why I now regret seeing you, because I was about to say that, but it's fine, you said it so much better than I ever could. So, so what he said was that our power rests with our influence of the village board to do the legislating, to get our code changed, to require these things. And this leads to a big discussion that we really should have about doing things to keep New Pauls green or greener than, than we ever have been able to do so far, but, you know, we don't have that much construction going on, we don't have that many projects going on, but we can still have some influence, and I think anything we can do to help. Yeah, the daylight in this little, little thing here was such a, you know, it seemed like, what? But it really is nice. a, you know, it seemed like, what? But it really is nice, it's very nice. And they, they showed a slide of the Strong Mill River, which used to be a river, by the way, and it has been channelized and undergrounded and everything else through Yonkers, and I forgot the other. But they daylighted a large section of it through Yonkers, and it's really, it's beautiful. It's, it's made such a difference to the area. People, you know, they have benches there, they, it's, it's great. People come and just go there, it's a destination now. So anyhow, that's that. But, but about training, there's lots of stuff out there, and I would encourage each of you to tell me what kinds of stuff you would like to have training for. We have a budget for training. I would like to use that to get something for us, to have them come here, rather than go to these workshops all over the place, to, to have someone design something or present something that fits our needs or our desires, what kind of stuff we would like to learn about. So I would ask each of you to please send me a note with whatever your priorities are, whatever your thoughts are about this.
How do I know whether or not a course qualifies for training?
This is a real problem. It's a pain in the, in the thing for me, because the only things that now are authorized are those that are offered by Ulster County unless we get prior village board approval. So each one has to be, and it's a real nuisance.
Oh, so it's actually up to the village board whether it counts?
Yes.
It's not a, it's not a department.
I see this hand in the audience. Is what?
I have, I have a resolution to the board tomorrow night that we'll change that.
In what way?
In, in all state, county, and planning APA.
Great. So any other, that's great, because, you know, Duchess County gives lots of training also that's really very well done, and cheap, and it's close. And I'm sure that Orange County and, you know, neighboring areas, there's all kinds of stuff, and to have to go through the village board for, you know, for their approval is sometimes not timely possible, and sometimes it's just a nuisance. So this is, this would be really nice. Thank you, Bren. Anybody have anything else to discuss this evening? Here and none? May I have a motion to adjourn? All right, everyone wants to stay here.
Nobody wants to go home. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Litten. May I have a second?